Welcome to the November 10th. School Commissioners. To invite all those that wish to stand and recite the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yep, I will mute.
Okay. So. Tonight, we are missing Commissioner DeJus and Olinic, and all other commissioners are in attendance. So next up would be approval of the agenda.
So move.
Second.
Thank you, Hurley. And I have a second.
Second.
Okay. Dina with a second. And so any discussion? None. Okay. So the agenda passes then. So first up is the consent agenda. And in the consent agenda are the minutes from previous meeting, personnel memo six one five, a bus purchase memo, and second policy reading of policy number eight two five one on electronic communications between employees and students. So I would entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda.
So moved.
Thank you, Kevin. And we have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. And I think that was Dina with a second. So all those in favor?
Allison?
Yeah.
I need to abstain. I have a cousin on the agenda, personnel memorandum. I don't legally have to, but I do want to make sure that I do abstain.
Okay, so we will not.
Yeah, I second. I was trying to unmute myself. I second I will abstain same side of the family.
Okay. So. So all those in favor of the consent agenda? I guess we will. We're going to have to do it roll call because it won't be unanimous because we have two abstentions. So. Dina?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Erin?
Yes.
Charlene?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Joanne?
Yes.
Okay. And so then. And I don't believe we have any opposed. So we will move to the abstentions. And note Commissioners Hurley and Brittany Kovakis have abstained. And that is everyone. So the agenda carries. Sorry, the consent agenda passes. So next on the agenda, communications. And we did not have anyone that registered to. And I do not believe we are in receipt of any written communications. Is that correct, Joanne?
None.
None. Okay. Excellent. So.
I'd like to address the board, please.
And program updates. So.
Allison, I'd like to address the board under communications. Uninterrupted, please. I need to do a point of clarification. I have reached out to the Secretary of State's office. Brittany and I are not in conflict on the board, as was alluded in an article in the Rutland Herald. There is a potential other conflict that they are exploring, but Brittany and I are not involved with any conflict on the board. I also want to make a public statement that contrary to my board chair's beliefs, I am not considered a racist and a white supremacist. I am truly believing that we needed to do more. And I still, to this day, believe we need to do more investigation into this outrageousness and decisiveness that this community has been brought into. I also am offended by. I have sat on many boards in my lifetime. Never have I been treated or called out so openly by a board chair in the past. And if the board chair realizes there's been plenty of communications not being read, but we have received written communications requesting her resignation as chair. I will not request her resignation as chair, but I expect a full apology from her on her remarks that showed to the fact that I am a racist and a white supremacist, and I am in conflict. I have never, ever in my life been treated so badly on a board than I have with this one. I have consulted my attorney, and he is looking at different options for me. But something has to be rectified, and I want it done tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. As we were on the agenda that we were on was the school program updates. And so we have. I'm sorry, I didn't see if both our student reps were on. Okay, I see Hannah, and there's Bella. So I will turn it over to you. Thank you.
Yes, so RAS, we celebrated Red Ribbon Week with the School Spirit Week, and most of our students participated. We were able to virtually meet and ask questions to published author Christian Heidecker. Students were able to learn about his writing process as well as see what the inside of his home office looks like. It really showed kids that you can, in fact, write anywhere. We are wrapping up our first trimester this Friday, November 13th, and have about 20 remote learners switching to in-person on Monday. Prodders reports will be going home on November 24th. Our big news is that we just filled our first school-wide token jar for positive behaviors and are getting ready for our first school-wide celebration this Friday. At Northeast, flexibility and positivity were the character themes at Northeast for the month of October. And students and staff were recognized for showing these traits all month long. This month, Northeast will focus on leadership and how to build leaders in every class. Also at Northeast, kindergarten students enjoyed curbside visits from Rutland City Firemen, learning about equipment and fire safety. At Northwest, honesty and integrity were the theme for the month of October at Northwest. And the month ended on a high with the recognition of students who displayed these character traits at the virtual assembly. Northwest's own kindergarten teacher, Sue Cody, was the hero as she told children about how she demonstrates honesty and integrity in her role as a judge for both cheerleading and swim teams. Despite being virtual, 90% of Northwest's parents participated in the October parent-teacher conferences. That's all I have. Thank you.
Hi, so I'll be speaking for the middle school and the high school. Last week of October, everyone at Rutland Middle School enjoyed a week of spooky and entertaining activities thanks to Erica Walstrom, the Director of Student Engagement, and Miranda Burton, our Administrative Assistant extraordinaire. There was a daily candy jar guess, costume contest, and a coup tournament. They also decorated our hallways. Thank you, Ms. Pam Reed and Mr. Bill Olson for taking on the difficult task of judging such creative artistic wonders. There were many winners for all of these competitions from both remote learners, Learning Academy, and in-person students, which helped them feel a very necessary sense of unity. At the same time, they also celebrated Red Ribbon Week, which is a national event that allows people to unite, to take a visible stand against drug abuse. You may have seen people wearing a red ribbon symbol to show their commitment. At RMS, each day had a different theme. Wear red or white sunglasses, something from your favorite sports team, et cetera. They appreciate the efforts of their counselors who organized the fun event. Thank you to Ms. Walstrom again, David Cornwell, and Justin Vacy for organizing our annual student faculty soccer game. Last Thursday afternoon proved to be a beautiful sunny day, just perfect for an outdoor event with masks, of course. Faculty won four to one. Our staff is a bit competitive on the field. Everyone enjoyed playing in or watching the game. So for RHS, the RHS orchestras have been researching, sorry, rehearsing since the beginning of the year. They are preparing for a concert that will be livestreamed on YouTube Wednesday, November 18th at 7:00 PM. And then Encore, which is the Rutland Theater Program, will be doing a virtual production of Midsummer Night's Dream and are very excited that they are back up and running. And for fall sports, they're coming in at a close with a football win, and the cross-country team making in the meat of champions and placing seventh. Congratulations to Brady Geisler, who placed 21st overall, and congratulations to the whole team. And then just a reminder that on Wednesday, November 11th, which is tomorrow, Veterans Day, take a minute of your day to reflect on the freedoms we enjoy as Americans because of the actions of our military, women, and men. Thank you.
Thank you, Isabella and Hannah. So next on the agenda is the RHS Program of Studies. So I will turn it over to Superintendent Olson.
Thanks, Allison. And I will turn it over to Bianca McKean and Greg Schellinger.
Good evening. Thank you for providing us the opportunity to present to the board. I'm Bianca McKean. I am the newest Associate Principal at Rutland High School, and my focus is on teaching and learning. Every year, we produce a program of studies that showcases our course offerings as well as opportunities for our students. This program of studies is used for the registration process as well as some marketing for the school as it is often distributed to eighth graders from sending schools, many of which have school choice. So it is a nice opportunity for us to be able to share what's special and different about Rutland High School. Tonight, I'm just going to be reviewing some of the noteworthy changes to the program of studies from this current school year as we look forward into next school year. Ultimately, we look at which classes will be offered from the program of studies based on student interest. And that becomes evident to us through the registration process, and we build our master schedule accordingly. So I believe you have the noteworthy changes document. This year, we're looking at two specific changes to the program of studies that I'll speak briefly to. We are going to be adding a course in our music program. It's called Fast Track to Instrumental Music. This course will allow students to have access to band and orchestra, even if they haven't played an instrument in quite a while. So currently, students can still access band and orchestra as beginners, but it can be a challenge. So the hope is to offer a quarter-long course that students could enroll in that would allow them to have an opportunity to kind of brush up on those skills and gain more confidence, and then eventually would move more seamlessly into our ensembles. So it's a course that's not really for in the seediest population, but more motivated for students who really want to learn, improve, and be able to join those ensembles. The next change speaks to our competency-based program, which we actually did begin this school year. Currently, our competency-based courses, which are offered in English, Math, Science, and Social Studies, are being offered as quarter classes. For the fall term, we are looking to help students who are negatively impacted by the pandemic. And we're allowing students to work with a core content teacher to help them regain credit in courses that they carried incompletes over from the spring semester. And in the first term alone, which ended on Friday, we have had approximately 38 classes that students have been able to regain credit for. And again, those are students who were adversely impacted by the pandemic. As we move into next school year, we're looking to really offer this as another flexible pathway for students. So we have many flexible pathways at the high school, but this would help students who maybe the traditional coursework they haven't been as successful with. So we'd be looking at students in grades 10 through 12 that we would be able to offer a more flexible learning environment. Students would still be focusing on the overarching and prioritized standards that they would in a traditional classroom, but it would allow students to engage with the curriculum at a different pace and a more personalized way with their teachers.
Okay, great. Thank you. Is that all from Bianca and Greg? Okay. So any questions from the board? I think you had your hand up, Joanne. You're on mute.
Great. Okay. Bianca, thanks. That's, that's great. I have a question for you. Do you expect to have more students seeking alternative paths due to COVID or about the same? Or what do you think?
That's a good question. I think we're definitely seeing some impacts due to COVID, and we're trying our best to look at our intervention models and to best meet student needs. So right now, being able to offer the competency-based courses in the design that we've sort of tailored specifically this during the fall semester to more of a credit recovery-based that has really been helpful. We, as an administrative team, are constantly reviewing the current data to see what other needs we might need to consider or look at within our current framework. But certainly, I think our population's always shifting, and student needs are always shifting. So we always have to sort of look creatively with the resources we have available and, and look at how we can help our students.
Thank you. I appreciate the work that you guys have put into this.
And any other board members have any questions? Don't see any. So thank you very much, Bianca. So next on the agenda is the Central Office Report. So first up is going to be the Superintendent's Report. So I will turn it over to Superintendent Olson.
Thank you, Allison. I will not say it as well as Bella said it, but tomorrow is Veterans Day. And we at R C P S want to thank our veterans for their service and their sacrifice. And we also want to remind families that school's not in session tomorrow. I almost forgot that myself. So just a reminder and a thank you. We are now in our 10th week of in-person instruction. We think every week is a huge success story. So we want to thank our staff, our students, families, and really the community for following the health guidelines. This has helped us a lot. We ask that you please continue. We also want to remind folks that the Agency of Commerce and Community Development has required quarantines if you're traveling to restricted areas in New England and beyond in the Northeast. And that especially applies to Thanksgiving plans. People are, or the state government is recommending people do not travel. So if people travel, we, we'd have to face a quarantine. So we want, want people to understand that. We also want people to understand, especially in the parent community, that so far, we've had great luck, great success with staying in person. But we just want people to be aware. You know, remote learning could be a requirement if we ran into a situation where we have to do some contact tracing. Or even if we have staff challenges. We've been pretty, pretty tight on making sure staff don't come to school if they're just sick or, you know, just, just a regular cold or not feeling well. So we're trying to be as conservative as possible on this. So, so far, we've had good luck with that. But we, we want that to be in people's heads so that that could be a possibility, that we might have to go to a remote setting for a short, short period of time. Another reminder to families, we've spoken about this before, but we, as we come into the winter season, we want to remind people that we plan to use our remote learning capabilities to do a remote session of, of learning in case of an inclement weather day. So we've talked about that with parents. So we'll send another correspondence out on that to make absolutely clear this is how we would do it. But we're, we're basically trying to avoid snow days and keep the, keep the learning moving. Last month, we spoke a little bit about Act 5154, which was signed by the governor. And part of that, that law gave schools five fewer student contact days. And we plan on using those days for our teachers and staff to continue their planning. And simply to catch up, our staff have committed to a very, very high level of in-person instruction despite the pandemic. It comes with a great deal of effort, believe me. People are working very, very hard. So we want staff to be able to use those days to keep up with the pace that we've set and, and, and catch up. So we will detail all of this in a parent and staff communication. But I'm just letting the board know now that three of those days, three of the five, we plan to use soon. One of them will be on December 11th. It would be a Friday. Another will be on February 5th. And the third will be on March 12th. We try to space them out and try to give kids a little break on, on a weekend. That means students wouldn't come into school. We won't, we wouldn't have learning classes on those days, but staff would be working. So the staff will be working in the buildings and doing some of the planning work that they need to catch up on. The other two days that we, of the five, we plan to put at the end of the calendar. And those will be on June 17th and 18th. And we're going to use those days for professional development. And if we have to, to try to, like as Bianca was talking about, to try to catch students up if they, if they have fallen behind by the end of the year. I, I'm just, this is just a reminder for board members. We are going through the budget process, and the Finance Committee has put another meeting on the board calendar, which is on the back of the agenda. So we've added a Finance Committee meeting on December 1st. And that, that would be our last Finance Committee meeting, which would review the final budget proposal that would go to the board in December 8th. So all are welcome if you want to come to that meeting just to see how, how the budget finally shapes up. And I think the Finance Committee is also leaving, leaving the door open for another finance meeting on December 15th after the whole board meeting on the 8th, if, if they need to meet again afterwards. This came in just this morning. The Agency of Education and Department of Health are going to conduct a voluntary staff testing for COVID-19 for all schools in the state. They're doing a surveillance, surveillance testing process. And we were just, just heard about it this morning. Details aren't really too complete, but they are going to begin this next week. And they will try to test anybody who wants to, any staff member, staff member in schools who want to be tested next week. And then subsequent weeks through December, they'll, they'll do a smaller number. So the details of that are coming out. But I wanted the board to be able to know about that. And last is, I think, in the spring, maybe, maybe last winter, the board might have heard about the UVM waiting study that was presented to the legislature at the beginning of the 2020 session. That, that study is still in play, and it's going to be considered, we expect, next session, beginning in January 2021. And so a reminder for the board or for new members of the board, the waiting study looks at equity in state education funding and tries to see, are we measuring students the way we want to measure students based on how much it costs, basically, to, to educate a student? So they're looking at how students are weighted. They're looking at different, different characteristics of students, classes of students, and how much it costs to, to educate a student. For instance, like an English language learner might be a little bit more expensive, or high school students are a little bit more expensive. So some of the conclusions of that study include a possibility of changing the, the formula for measuring students based on school size, population density, economic disadvantages. I mentioned ELL students, number of high school and number of middle school students in a district. So that is, will be discussed next, next session, we, we understand. And Rob and Ted and I have been attending or have attended some meetings already, and there's some more meetings to come on that. And I understand some board members have been invited to another meeting connected to that issue. So we thank them for getting involved in that. It would certainly have an effect on education funding in Rutland. So we'll, we'll have more to, to detail when we, when we find out how it progresses. So that is it for me, Allison. And if there's any questions, I can answer them or?
Sure. So any board members have questions for Bill, Brittany? And then I have Dina?
Bill, with the current, we do have a current breakout at a local facility here in Rutland. Just a little concerned about parents that may work in the facility, bringing that in. So we may want to just, I just got actually an update this afternoon that it's a larger than what they had expected. So I think it's something if we could put that out there just so that, you know, people are aware if they've been in contact with those. You know, if their mom or dad happens to work there, that probably should be quarantining just to be on the safe side. But it's, it's looking pretty large, so.
Just, just heard that tonight, too. Yeah. Thank you for that, Brittany.
You're welcome.
Great. And Dina?
A COVID-related question. So some of the schools or colleges especially are looking at an extended kind of winter Christmas break to buffer the return of families and kids to school. Have there been any discussion about maybe precautionary type of buffering the Christmas vacation to create that margin of quarantine, almost like a mandate quarantine based on the fact that the school may do remote learning for that period of time just to allow things to settle after the holidays and then coming back? I don't know what, if there was any discussion or any thought about it at the state level or, or at our district level?
Yeah, that's a great question, Dina. There has been discussion, a lot of discussion over the past, I'd say, six weeks or so. It's been kind of on people's radar. And at this, at the state level, for sure. And we've discussed it with our, with our COVID planning group. At the state level, the state, I think, has decided that they're, they're not going to say one way or the other that there, there should be any kind of move to remote learning. They're going to look at it on a, it's up, basically, they're saying it's up to the superintendent. And it's really a local decision based on conditions in each locality. The concern a lot of people have, I think, is really daycare issues. And how do we, how do we, you know, having school remote without having cases in place puts a lot of pressure on families? I know that there is, there's, I just heard of one district that has decided to make that jump, so, just recently. So it is a concern. And then what, what becomes another part of the concern is if there are a lot of people who travel and have to quarantine, that's, that, that'll be a challenge that we'll have to face. And, and it might become a staffing challenge as well. So as I understand it, hearing about different superintendents around the state, I don't know that very many have made that move yet, unless something's changed just recently. I was on a call today, and I didn't hear that. But we're, we're trying to just monitor ourselves and see how, how it goes for us. And if we have to make that decision, we would, we would have to make it more on, you know, get closer to that point.
Thank you.
Okay. And any other board members have any questions? Okay, seen none. The next thing on the Central Office Reports is the Stafford Technical Center Budget Presentation. So I don't know if you want to speak to that, Bill, or if I should just turn it right over to Melissa?
No, I think Melissa's and Kate Bosnis, they're ready to go. They've, they worked quite hard on this over the past number of weeks with, with their different committees connected to Stafford. So they have, they've got a good plan in place for next year. So I'll turn it over to Melissa and Kate.
Awesome. Thank you. For those of you that don't know me, I'm Melissa Connor. I'm the director here at Stafford, and Kate Bosnis is our assistant director. Just to give you a little bit of background, we have a lot of new board members since our last budget presentation. We wanted to just kind of tell you a little bit about the structure of how our budget is built here at Stafford. Stafford has a regional advisory board, which is very similar to our own school board. So we have two governing bodies that we work with. And under the regional advisory board, there are several subcommittees, one of them being the Finance Committee. The Finance Committee is made up of all of the superintendents for all of the districts that we serve, along with school board members, community business members, and then staff here at Stafford. Ian DeJus is the Rutland City School Board rep, and obviously Bill Olson. So they have been very active. We also have Ted Plamenas, who joins us so that he can offer his advice to us as we move through the process. At the beginning of this year, our RAB Executive Committee charged us with having a zero At the beginning of this year, our RAB executive committee charged us with having a zero percent tuition increase over last year. Which, given kind of a lot of the uncertainties that we're facing with healthcare, with salaries, um where we're all in negotiation years, was quite a challenge. Um and also we have this thing called COVID hanging over our head. Um so there was a lot of challenges going in. And so in doing that, um Kate and I worked through various scenarios, looking at, we kind of had three umbrellas, looking at combined projected healthcare and salary increases um at two and a half percent, 10% and then seventeen and a half percent. And then under those three umbrellas, we worked with six different staffing scenarios. And the staffing scenarios were really done in ways to, we're, you know, any budget is a revenue and expense-driven item. With us, the revenues are um full-time enrollments, so every student is a revenue for us, um when you're looking at it from a budget point of view. So we wanted to have the least impact on student enrollments. Um and with Stafford, with a lot of the regulations we have through OSHA, we are required to have certain staffing levels. Um so for some of our hard lab programs, for instance, we have to have one instructor and sixteen students is the max that we can have in there to be in compliance. If we add a para educator, we can bump that up to twenty-one students. So we have very strict requirements. And so what we tried to do when we were going through, looking at the staffing scenarios, is to figure out how can we cut our expenses without cutting the revenues? And so that was our goal in doing this. One of the foundations of career and tech center budgets is what we call a six semester average. And you should have a packet from us that has several documents that we'll be reviewing tonight. The first one is on pages eight and nine of that document. And the tech centers are billed, or each of the towns that we serve and our students come from, are billed on a rolling six semester average. So every fall and every spring, we have to submit to the Agency of Education where our student enrollments are. And so for Rutland City, currently, we have seventy-nine students that live in Rutland City, um enrolled at Stafford. But because of the use of the six semester average, Rutland City is only being billed sixty-nine point three students. And the way, the reason that they do this is to protect towns, especially small towns, from having dramatic swings. So if there was a sudden increase in enrollment, we wouldn't want to have that expense for the town all in one, one jump. So they do that so that it, it towns can budget for this and the schools can budget for this in a more seamless manner. But that's one of the things that's a little bit different about our budget from other budgets. So as we moved into um the process this year, we started with our program committee. And the program committee is really designed to look at the programs that we offer, the curriculum that we offer. And so we started having conversations about where we could make cuts um to save on expenses, but not impact the student learning and student opportunities. And the program committee settled on one um program, one staffing recommendation, which is what we're going to be presenting tonight to you. Um it does have some staffing reconfigurations. Um and what it will do in the end is it will increase our capacity here at Stafford by eight FTEs, so eight full-time students will be able to increase, even with some staffing reductions. One of the things that we found um in working with our program committee and in the full RAB is that we had been proposing to expand two programs in the next fiscal year, electrical and plumbing and health careers, which have had very healthy waitlists for the last five years. And what we had decided to do um as a board and what we're proposing is that we will continue the expansion of our electrical and plum- plumbing program, looking to hire on for the FY22 a master electrician. And what this will do will allow the students in our electrical and plumbing program to select a pathway, whether they want to follow the electrical or plumbing after exploring both. And then by having both a master electrician and a master plumber, students will be able to earn hours towards their apprenticeship. Currently, because we only have a master plumber on staff, only students in the plumbing pathway can earn apprentice hours while they're in high school. And this saves them significantly on cost and it saves employers on cost down the road. So that's something we are looking to expand. It will be covered by our Perkins Grant, which is a five-year grant that we have, so it's a federal grant, and each year we will phase more into the local budget. And again, with that six semester average, it would allow us to double the capacity of that program from sixteen to thirty-two. And by the time the um salary and benefits for that staff member are fully in the local budget, the six semester average would have increased and that revenue will be covering that expense. So it's done in a very planful manner. So in the end, after we had many deliberations with the finance committee, the finance committee made the decision that the budget that we would present this evening is kind of the worst-case scenario. Um there's lots of conversations about healthcare, um salary negotiations, as I mentioned earlier. And the superintendents and the board members on the committee really felt that we were better off going in the worst case where we have to start our budget process so early. And there is a, you know, a um security blanket for each of the towns in the state regulations for CTE. If we are, if we overestimate our budget and we have a surplus of money, anything exceeding three percent is returned to the towns based on that six semester average. And on the opposite side, if we underestimated our budget and we were running into a deficit, again, anything beyond three percent, we could bill out. We always want to go on the high end because we never want to ask a school district to send us more money, so we always want to go on the high end. But the school district, those towns would get money returned to them if that were the case. So as I mentioned, um we are looking for um the budget that we have at the worst case. Kate Bosnis is going to walk us through the very specifics of the budget, along with a couple of exciting grant opportunities that we have that we um wanted to present to you this evening. So Kate, I will turn it over to you.
All right, thank you, Melissa. Good evening, everyone. So I'll be starting on page three of the packet that we submitted. And I'll walk you through the proposed budget and additional grant funds that we have access to that will help support our FY22 school year. Um as Melissa mentioned, our RAB program committee is very involved. And on November 4th uh last week, they approved our FY22 Perkins Plan. And an overview of that Perkins Grant financials can be found on page seven of your packet. Currently, we're near two of our five-year Perkins Plan. And as we prepare for the FY22 school year, we'll be focusing on increasing access for middle school students to engage in career and technical ed activities. Um we're planning to develop a mobile unit where it's a center-wide program, where the, each program will develop a kit that represents their program and their technical area. And with this mobile trailer unit, we'll be able to deliver activities and whatnot to area middle schoolers. Also, as Melissa mentioned, we're expanding our electrical plumbing program with a master electrician. That will be part of our Perkins funding next year. And this year, we recently brought on a, an additional school counselor and a curriculum integrationist. And both of these staff members um are helping to support our career planning for our students and helping our instructors uh with curriculum alignment to proficiency that is deemed by the state. So we make sure that our students are accessing high-quality education while they're here with us. And we'll also be continuing to develop plans for professional development for our staff so we can maintain the knowledge and expertise and continue to grow as we move forward. So the anticipated Perkins Grant allocation for FY22 is three sat, excuse me, three hundred and thirty-six thousand, five hundred and ninety-one dollars. So this amount we're basing on the Perkins Grant that we received last fiscal year, the actual amount we won't receive until this spring. Um so as we move toward the proposed budget, there are two pieces of information that I want to point out before I begin. Um the first is our um our budget was developed using the FY21 base education rate, which typically raises about two percent each year based on inflation. So we use this rate to estimate our overhead assistance amount, which is provided by the state each year. And this factor, factors into um our tuition at the end. So as we move forward, the um total direct expenditures for FY22 represent an increase from FY21 to FY22 of two point one percent when compared to the same line items of the previous year. And as Melissa mentioned, this year was a very challenging budget year. Um in light of the expected increases in healthcare and our salary for our staff, we were tasked with presenting a budget that had a zero percent tuition increase. So this resulted in extensive cuts um across the entire center-wide budget, our program budgets, staffing reconfigurations, with the end result of our total expenditures increasing by two point nine percent. So our total revenues for FY22 are up five percent as compared to a point seven percent decrease from FY21. Um this is the result of an increase in our six semester average, or we increased this year with um more student enrollment. And then a small increase within the Perkins Grant, which is part of our overall budget. So based on these figures, um our overall net expenditures are increased by two percent. And our FY22 tuition rate is seventeen thousand, eight hundred and ninety-five dollars. And this was, again, the same amount um for FY21. So this dollar amount is calculated by taking the net expenditures and dividing it by our six semester average. So based on last year's tuition rate, Stafford is eighth lowest in the state for tuition rate, and we expect to be in the same area for FY22. And on page nine of your packet, you can see the comparison of the um career and tech ed centers across the state and where they fall. Um and another part of our budget this year, something new is COVID-related, but um we were able to access GEAR grant funds for technical um career and tech ed schools. So in October, Governor Scott announced that these funds would be able, would be available to help CTE centers in their efforts to support our students engaging in a safe, high-quality career tech education during a global pandemic. And for our students, it's exceptionally difficult because we're primarily a hands-on learning program and it's really hard to um, you know, bring a welder home or, you know, work on the electrical outlets in your house. So we don't want anything like that to happen. So with these GEAR grant funds, um we're able to allocate and move some of the new equipment submissions from our program instructors to sorry. So when we began our budget and the planning process in September, um many programs submitted additional equipment and technology requests to address the challenges we faced last spring. Um in anticipation of the GEAR funds, we moved the purchases, as I mentioned before, from the local budget into the GEAR grant. So in order for our um GEAR grant funds to be approved, we have to um our requests have to fall into four different areas. So it's personnel, technology, infrastructure, instructional costs and other. And at Stafford, we plan to spend the funds on two of the areas, technology, infrastructure and instructional costs totaling three hundred and seventy-four thousand, seven hundred and twenty-one dollars and sixty-four cents. So our goal in developing a plan for these funds was to ensure that any purchase that we made would be purposeful and that we would improve student learning well beyond the pandemic and not just for the time being. And on um page six of your packet, you'll be able to see an overview of the GEAR grant funds and how they'll be allocated. Um and the funding for the GEAR, GEAR grant is available from July 1st, 2020 through September 30th, 2022.
So the next, then just, uh sorry, the next steps um is that we will present the same presentation to our full RAB on December 2nd. And then we will come back to you on December 10th. Um and we'll hopefully have a ratification of our budget and then we will have an official announced tuition rate that we can then share with our partner districts. And that's it. Thank you, Allison.
Sure. Thank you, Melissa and Kate. I did have um Anne wasn't able to make it at this time. So she did, she is our, um as, as Melissa mentioned, our uh representative from our school board onto the regional advisory board for Stafford. Um so just her insight um into the process. Uh she says that uh Melissa Connor led the creation of a budget with a diff- with different scenarios, different rates of increase, including this flat budget scenario. Some programming changes were based on the program committee's prior meetings, subsequent recommendations, taking into consideration uh fid- fiduciary responsibility, best learning scenarios for our kids and most practi- practical opportunities for the most students. Um she says it was a very, it was very thorough and she'd like to acknowledge the excellent job and quick process uh by Melissa and her team, and she is grateful for their work and supports the outcome proposed. So um that's just from Anne. And any other board members have any questions? Joanne?
Just like to say that Melissa presented this uh to the finance committee meeting this week and the uh finance committee agreed that uh we are in support of this. Thank you for all your uh work, Melissa and Kate.
Absolutely.
And Ted, too.
Thank you. And any other board members with any questions? Okay, great. Thank you very much. So uh the next thing on the agenda is the budget, the maintenance and capital plan. Um so I don't know if you want to take that up, Bill, and lead into Michael and Ted, or?
I, I will just put on the screen if, if you don't mind, Ted, uh sorry, Michael has a short summary of some of the points he's going to make. So I'll put that up there if I can. And I'll pass it on to Michael and Ted.
And uh just before I get started, I'd like to thank Isabella and Superintendent Olson as a veteran for their kind words. I'd also like to wish a happy 245th birthday to all you crayon-eating devil dogs out there. As you see on the, on the next page, I'm going to talk just very briefly about a couple of very hard-hitting parts to the budget that I am recommending to the school board. Uh you'll notice on the next slide that my budget is below what we had put in for last year. Uh I did this very intentionally, knowing that we could have a very difficult budgeting year coming up. And I wanted to address just the essentials for um what I believe we're going to need to get through for next year. Um we'll talk about the additional costs for COVID-19 and the very minimal projects that we're doing for uh uh the summertime of 2021. Um next slide, if you would, sir. So as stated, I have dropped my budget a couple of percentage points from what we had proposed last year. This is a drop not only in the uh operational budget, but in the capital budget as well. Not much more to say to that, except that we have really cut this budget down to the bone to make sure we have what we need to encompass all of the challenges that are in front of us. Next slide, if you would, sir. These are the costs that are going up because of COVID-19. Some of you who have been on the board for quite a while understand that I have done um incremental cleanings and replacements of the carpet over at the intermediate school. I've used that same line of thought to take care of the cleaning of the ventilation ducts throughout the school district as well. Instead of treating the entire ducting system as one project, I would take care of small portions of each school uh over the course of the year. And over the course of a couple of years, we would get the entire ventilation system clean. We don't have that option anymore. Um the current pandemic that's going on is requiring us to clean the entire ventilation systems in the school district. And that is driving a large portion of the costs for this year. Along with that, uh there's been a recommendation that we change from one style of air filter in our ventilation system to a different type. Uh for any of you technical folks out there, we're moving from a MERV eight to a MERV thirteen filter. This filter is required to be changed out quarterly as opposed to semiannually. Not usually an issue, except that a full filter change is eleven thousand dollars as opposed to five thousand dollars. So instead of paying ten thousand dollars a year for filter changes, we are now looking at approximately forty-four thousand dollars. Uh the additional costs for the COVID um uh pandemic include the addition of cleaning supplies, uh the extra cost for the energy systems because we are required to over-pressurize buildings, we're required to run systems for a couple of hours prior to the start of school, instead of starting them up just an hour before schools. Uh these are all recommendations that have been set forth by the AOE that we have adopted into our system. These are the driving costs for the budget as far as COVID-19 goes. Next slide, if you would, sir. The other part of the budget is the um reduction of the number of projects that I would normally have put forth for the summertime. Whereas last year, we were looking to do things, including the kitchen over at Allen Street and the rehab of some of the and the rehab of some of the um libraries in the schools. Uh, those projects are all out the window and everything now is driven either by COVID nineteen or by the facility condition assessment. Uh, at RIS, I thought I was done with the replacement of carpets. However, because we are now eating meals in these classrooms, the carpets are receiving an excessive amount of wear and will require replacement more uh, a little bit sooner than what we had planned on. Um, part of the FCA, well, and, and again, um, uh, as a reminder, the facility condition assessment. When you hear me say the FCA, that is the facilities condition assessment that we had done this past spring. Uh, we identified some water intrusion over at the intermediate school that we need to look at. Um, over at Allen Street, we also have some water intrusion into the basement that we have to pay attention to. Uh, parking lot repairs and the replacement of the basketball court. At first, I thought the basketball court was going to be a nice-to-have situation, but it was actually identified within the FCA as well. There's a number of different ventilation systems up on the rooftops at the high school, Stafford Tech and the middle school that need to be replaced. These are items that are in excess of twenty-five years old, uh, including ventilation systems and air conditioning systems. Uh, once again, identified on the FCA that need to be replaced. Uh, one of them has failed a couple of times, but we were able to put uh, some medium dollars into the repair of the units and not require a complete replacement. Uh, both at Longfellow and at RMS, we have a few um ADA compliance issues that we need to either investigate or fix. Uh, no, I'm not talking about putting in a two hundred and thirty thousand dollar elevator system at Longfellow. However, the bathrooms do need some work. And the um, the ramp going up from the Keith Gym into the catwalk of the middle and intermediate schools is certainly not compliant. Uh, if we do any work in that area, we will have to work on the compliance for that ramp as well. Uh, the other item of importance is the underground storage tank monitor over at the Northeast School. This monitor is beyond its life expectancy and is ready for replacement. Next slide, sir. Oh, never mind. That's the end of the slides. Those are the driving costs of the budget that I have put forth. Um, if anybody has any questions, I'll be happy to address them.
Any board members have any questions for Michael?
Brittany.
Michael, just a quick question. Um, are we expecting any of the, like on the filtration systems? Um, the air, the air filter, are we hoping um, for any COVID relief funding for that?
So in working with my budget, um, with my own personal lines of thought, um, we have received, or rather, we have been promised um, funding reimbursement for the costs that we have incurred already. However, we are now moving into maintenance costs as opposed to um, pandemic urgent need costs. And I do not expect that the uh reimbursements will continue for the maintenance. I hope I'm wrong on that. I hope that there is a pot of money that, that falls out of the sky that says use this for the um, the, the COVID response. But I don't build a budget based on um, hopes and dreams. I build it based on what I know we have to do.
Yeah, exactly. No, I was just um, it would be great, wouldn't it? But um, if we have to keep it up, it, we at least started with that. That'd be awesome too. So we'll see. Maybe we will. We can dream, right?
Yep.
Any other questions?
Joanne?
Um, I just was wondering about an actual number. Um, because I didn't see any numbers, but um, also all the COVID funds, right? We just got about four million, but those all dry up, just have to all be spent by December thirty-first, correct? And there's been no announcement about any new ones yet for the next year, correct?
I'm going to have to defer to Ted on that. Again, I believe that is uh, the um, I believe that's the promise of the reimbursements and um, I'm sorry, I don't deal with promises very well.
So to pick up where you are, Michael, yeah, I would um, I would express it a little differently. Uh, they have not been, the funds have not been received. The application for those funds has been approved. The mechanism now going forward is to submit additional applications for the release. And you are correct, of course, Joanne, that the funds would have to be expended by December thirty-first for what are called CRF funds, COVID release funds. There is another category of funds called ESER, uh, elementary and secondary school emergency relief. Uh, and Rob has submitted an application for funds through that avenue, which will be available for expenditure. I believe, Rob, isn't it well into twenty twenty-one, if not twenty twenty-two?
They have to be budgeted by April thirty, and then I think you have to spend them into FY twenty-two. You can, you can also expend them on the current fiscal year.
Right. And so um, that provides us a possible way to uh fund some of these um, items if need be. Um, further to Michael's point, I would add that there's another program called, that is uh, put out by uh Efficiency Vermont, which is targeted toward HVAC upgrades uh and new systems. Because as Michael said, most of our work has been targeted toward uh, uh, cleaning and filters and that sort of thing, rather than wholesale changes of the systems. Um, in Michael's estimation thus far, uh, as the engineer on staff, uh, we don't, the district doesn't really qualify for those funds, though we've taken a look at it. And we've spoken with engineers with Efficiency Vermont. Um, to that point, uh, Michael's budget does absorb more than two hundred thousand dollars of additional costs for the, for the F twenty-two year related to what he outlined for you. Uh, more expensive MERV thirteen filters that need to be changed more frequently and uh, air duct cleanings that have to be done in a different way. So when Michael is showing you that his proposed budget is dropping from one point eight million to one point seven million, that is after already absorbing two hundred thousand dollars of additional costs uh in that, in that area. Now, I will tell you that as we go through the additional steps of applying for the release of those coronavirus relief funds, we will look as hard as we can with a sharp pencil to see if we can include some of those filter and cleaning costs. And if we can, we certainly will. Um, and we've got a number of people looking at this um, with, at every step of the way. So we'll keep you posted on that. Um, Michael didn't have an opportunity to mention, but I would like to give him credit as well as his organization um, for the importance of the maintenance that his crew has made sure that we have conducted year after year. I mean, as you probably are familiar with, you always have to look at what are called total lifecycle costs. It's not just what you spend this year, but it's what you spend over the life of a system to maintain it. So as an example, some of you may know this, but at the high school, the artificial turf field that's there, which is rated to last for about ten years, is now twelve years old. And right now, Michael and his team, as well as some of the folks who are familiar with this, are targeting for replacement not until twenty twenty-four. And the reason mainly is because of the excellent maintenance uh that the team has provided over the years. Field's not supposed to last that long, but again, if you maintain it properly, uh, you get that extended life. So on net, you're saving quite a bit. Um, as part of that facilities condition assessment that Michael mentioned, which is done, what did you tell me, Michael? Every ten years typically?
Uh, ten years, yes. That's a, that's a good uh scheduling for it.
Right, at a cost of about fifty thousand dollars a shot. But coming out of that, um, they have tagged what the age of our school's boilers are. And we're going to be taking a look at that from a preventive maintenance standpoint, because each school typically has about two boilers. We want to take a look at how old those are and have a schedule over the next few years of what the anticipated replacement would be. Just as Michael has put together, and you'll talk about it in, in a few minutes, the bus replacement schedule. Twenty buses, plus or minus, ten-year average life, replace two every year so that you're not faced in any one given year with a big replacement. But I'll conclude on this note, because again, it's very important to keep in the back of your minds. When Michael and his team go through the annual budgeting process, which he's reviewed with you tonight, they also take a look at what the deferred items are, the things that could be done, may need to be done, but are not being done right now. The, the artificial turf on the high school, at the high school is an example of that. And it's expected to cost, when it's done, somewhere in the range of six hundred to seven hundred thousand dollars. That's a deferred capital item. We also have deferred maintenance items. And what's interesting from the perspective of the board should be, and I can get into more detail in a review later in this year, is if you look at that list right now, there's three and a half million dollars of deferred capital items that are on that list. And in an average spend of three hundred and fifteen to three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars of capital per year, that's eleven years worth of capital spending. Now, some of those items are not as critical as others, but that's a big number. And Michael and his team also have three-quarters of a million dollars of deferred maintenance on that deferred list. So the district's got north of four million dollars of deferred items that it's carrying on that list. And again, we can get into more details later, but um, we, we have to stay on top of this as Michael and his team have. So I'll, I'll answer any questions about what I said there. And then when you're ready, we can go into the overview of the financial, the fiscal year twenty-two budget.
Any board members have any questions?
I have one, Allison.
Sure. Hurley?
Um, we've gone through this route before. That's why we had to have a bond for the deferred maintenance.
Yes.
I mean, we can't keep going for these large bonds time and time again because of all this deferred maintenance. Um, I, do we have a plan for our buildings that we know? Um, what's going on with it? I mean, we're, we're, I'm very concerned because again, we just had that bond two or three years ago uh for all the deferred maintenance. And we're already talking what three million dollars are already in deferred maintenance. This has always been my bugaboo. Um,
It was actually five, I'm sorry, Hurley. It, it was actually five years ago that we did the um, the major bond. Uh, it was right when I first got here, the major bond for all of the maintenance that we did. And um, to your point, sir, uh, with this last energy um, uh, um, alignment that we did with JCI and the solar projects, we actually took care of quite a bit of deferred maintenance for our lighting systems, as well as our uh ventilation systems in the buildings, as well as our ventilation system and controls over at Longfellow. We did pick up a little bit of that um, with this last project, but you are entirely correct, sir. We have a huge amount of deferred maintenance and as an engineer, I know how to keep a plant running, uh, but just keeping a plant running is not doing what's necessary. We can make repairs to boiler systems, like Ted said, to keep the system running, to keep the buildings operational. But it's not, as you said, Hurley, it is not a matter of um, doing the work necessary. So as it stands right now, we have been making sure that schools stay open, whatever the cost. Um, there's, there's really, in my very limited understanding of the budgeting world, there's very little monies I have available to me to be able to um, to be able to say, okay, we won't do this because we have to do that maintenance. There's just not that money available. This is one of the primary reasons that I pushed and am very appreciative that the board finally let me do the facility condition assessment. Um, this is very much what has shown us what is needed on an urgency level. And that is why I put those within the budget this year. These are items that would otherwise have shown up on a deferred list that we can now see as needing to be done. And I can work into the budget that need to be done right now.
And one of the things that
That's fine, because I'm on this now.
Right. And one of the things, I'm sorry, I was going to add to what uh, Michael said. One of the things that here, he and I are going to do before he launches into his well-deserved second retirement is uh, we are going to uh, put together a, a five-plus-year schedule based upon that facility condition assessment, looking at critical items like electrical, which is probably in good shape, plumbing, boilers, that sort of thing, so that we can make a, a projection, as, as you're alluding to, Hurley, in terms of what monies we might want to have set aside for key items uh in the five-to-eight-year horizon to come, uh, rather than just a lights-on strategy. And, and then we'll give you, when we get into the budget reviews in greater detail in December, I'll lay this out for you so that you folks can think about that, you know, as you're planning. But to your point, Hurley, which um, is a really important one, in my opinion, when you talk about the bonds that have done some of that deferred maintenance and probably brought the totals down, one item that you're going to see, you've seen it before, in the district's uh, annual budget, is that little line called financing, which is principal repayments on existing debt issues, which I'll outline for you and show you the major ones, as well as the interest. And you know, that number in, in fiscal, in the fiscal twenty budget was one point two million dollars of repayments and interest. Uh, for this fiscal year twenty-one, it's one point three million dollars. And uh, an initial review suggests to me it's about one point three to one point four. So you know, out of your sixty-million-dollar budget, that's not insignificant. So we're going to have a review and we're going to talk about this. And the main point was, it's not just about your current year annual budget. Uh, we all need to be thinking ahead for the reasons that Michael has, has discussed with you and laid out.
The, the other question that I've always had is, is that why aren't we doing a sinking fund for large projects? We discussed this with the fields, because we're probably looking at three-quarters of a million dollars for the field. Um, we, we need to start putting this money aside, like the city does for like fire trucks and everything else. I know we have to go to the voters to put, to put a sinking fund together. But I think it would be wise to put one together to be able to use for large, large items as we're coming forward when we re- need to redo the roofs or we need to redo the field and stuff like that. Um, what are your thoughts on that, Ted?
I would agree.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks to you.
Hey, any other board members have any questions?
Joanne?
Oh, sorry. Joanne?
Yeah, um, so when we did that uh, assessment, I thought we were going to get a report. And we haven't seen one yet. So I'd like to
There you go.
Hey.
Yep, yep, yes, ma'am.
The board has not, the board, we have it, but the board has not received that report. So um, I guess let's make sure that gets on the agenda for, it's not you guys for the um, facility folks to make sure that they present that to the board on the next, at the next agenda.
Thank you, thank you for, thank you for that reminder. I will make sure that I send all of the electronic copies uh, as opposed to a printed copy. Uh, I'll send all the electronic copies to the building committees so that they can address it from that perspective.
Yeah, because I really appreciate that it's been done, but this was my fear that then it would just go away and I
I, I understand that. Let me do everything I can to allay those fears.
All right. Thanks, Michael. I appreciate it. Ted as well.
If you include me on that, that would be great. Thanks. So, all right, let me just turn
Include Freddie too.
You give me his email address and I'll send it to him.
Yeah, he, he, he may, he may have something to say about that too. Anyway, I, just in terms of the overall fiscal twenty-two budget, um, my main message Anyway, I, just in terms of the overall fiscal twenty-two budget, um, my main message to you, a couple of them actually are. First of all, the, the budget development is, is right on schedule. Um, we have two finance committee meetings this month. We had one last week on the fifth. We got another one on the seventeenth to review some of the key elements of the budget. Uh, last week, at, at our first finance committee meeting, we advised the committee that the current. Expense outlook for fiscal year twenty-two for both information technology and, as you've now heard, for building grounds and transportation. Are, are lower next year, both down by about four percent year to year, which of course is going in the right direction as long as we maintain operations reliability. Also, last week, we learned from the Vermont Education Health Initiative, which many refer to as VHI. That VHI has filed its proposed healthcare plan premium rates for next year. And they've advised that the overall increase, uh, on average is about ten percent, nine point eight for active employees. But what they also point out is those rate increases range from eight percent to eighteen percent. Depending upon which of four available plans an employee selects. So as the business office team and I are developing the salaries and budget benefit, uh, the salary and benefits budget for fiscal twenty-two. Obviously, one of the things we're factoring in there is which plan, uh, which plans are the various employees selecting. Um, we have completed a first pass at the salaries and benefits budget, uh, this week. Uh, there's still a lot of work to do in this area, as you might appreciate, but we're on schedule and completing a first pass. Uh, at this point, by mid, uh, by mid-November is good progress. As you might recall, salaries and benefits constitute eighty percent of the district's total annual costs. So obviously, we put a lot of emphasis on this area. As you may also know, in recent months, uh, the administrative leadership team has worked with high school principals and program directors. To determine staffing levels that are needed for, uh, twenty-two. Including the most optimal allocation of those resources for the district's programming needs, much as Staffer did in its process. And I'll be providing you more on that in the coming weeks. The reason why I did not put anything in writing in, in terms of charts for you this evening, and I'm doing it verbally. Is because these numbers are still moving, but they'll be buttoned up, uh, by early December for an initial review by the board. Um, as, as Bill said, and I'll just reiterate, so the plan is on Tuesday, December first. We're gonna present a first pass of the full budget to the finance committee. And as mentioned by Bill and Joanne, um, all board members are welcome to participate in that first review of the full budget. If you have the time and the interest. Uh, the following week, on December eighth, we'll present a proposed budget to the entire school board for its consideration and comment. Incorporating whatever guidance, uh, we're able to receive and, and update, uh, from that first review on December first. And then if necessary, and we're more than glad to do this, um. If additional analysis and information or possible revisions are appropriate after that December eighth meeting with the full school board. We're prepared to come back for a special meeting on Tuesday, December fifteenth, if that, uh, suits the board. Uh, the main goal there being to familiarize the board with key elements and decisions. Involved in the proposed budget to answer questions as much as possible before the holidays. Uh, and we hope that by doing that, we can facilitate then the board's review and consideration, um, in early January. I believe that meeting's on the twelfth. So let me stop there and ask if there are any questions, uh, that you might have about particular elements of the food, of the budget. Uh, or the timing, and I'll be glad to answer them as best I can at this point.
Okay, thank you, Ted. Any board members have any questions?
Thank you for your time.
All right, great. I don't see any at this time. Thank you. Um, so next up is the committee reports. And, um, first off, we have the finance and planning committee report, so I'll turn it over to Joanne as she chairs that committee.
Well, I think Ted covered our, um. Our, our report very well, uh, discussing the, uh, schedule. And again, as, uh, Superintendent, uh. Uh, Bill Olson and, uh, Ted had said. On December first, we're gonna have the board meeting, the, not the board meeting, the, uh, finance committee meeting. We're, we're gonna go into an in-depth discussion of the budget. And I'd like to ask that any board members who are interested come, because the next week it will be presented to the board. And of course, we're not voting on it until January, but, um, we're hoping to really have a thorough discussion of it, uh, in December.
Great, thank you, Joanne. And, um, the next committee report up is the policy committee, and Matt chairs that, but he is not in attendance. So he asked, um, Rob Bliss to pinch-hit this one, and so I'll turn it over to Rob. And as you may notice, Rob has got his facial hair going, so I'll also let him give, give his plug.
Thank you so much, Allison. So yeah, it's, uh, November, and for me, that means I'm supporting the Movember Foundation. Uh, the Movember Foundation, uh, encourages men to shave clean and then grow a mustache and become a walking billboard for men's health. The Movember Foundation supports research and education around the issues of testicular cancer, prostate cancer. Uh, suicide awareness and men's mental health. You can go to the Movember Foundation website to learn more about it. Uh, it's a great cause. If you're a man or you got a man in your life, uh, don't drink, don't smoke, talk to another human being. Exercise, stay healthy, and, uh, educate yourself. So thanks for that plug, Allison. I really appreciate it.
Okay, thanks, Rob.
And then, uh, if I may, on the policy committee. Um, so, uh, the, the policy committee met, uh, uh, on October twenty-seventh. And finalized some issues for first reading for the board. You have in your packet a memo that includes those things. The first one, two, three, four, five policies for first reading from the one thousand section. Are simply updates of clarity in terms of small language adjustments, uh, new terminology like gender-neutral pronouns. And then also, uh, just clarifying on one statute in the, uh, qualifications policy. So that it directly reflects Rollin City Public Schools. The, the policy that draws a little bit more attention is the last one at the bottom of that memo. It is policy seven four oh one, which is a draft of a new policy, uh, Title IX Sexual Harassment. Which is a, uh, requirement, uh, by the federal government. And the model policy had been drafted by the Vermont School Boards Association. The key to this particular policy, as it's drafted, is that it includes a preamble that had been penned by our legal counsel. To make sure that, A, we are in compliance with the law, we follow the policy, and also that it advises how we're addressing the policy. And as you look at this in first reading, as you go through the week, uh, I'd encourage you in the preamble section of that policy, seven four oh one. To look particularly at the second paragraph, because it defines. Why we are, why we're adopting the policy and how we're gonna monitor it as we go forward. Uh, as we, as we always say, if you have any questions on any of the policies, you can talk to the folks on the policy committee. Feel free to call me at Longfellow. And with that brief report, uh, we would need somebody to make a motion to, uh, approve these for first reading.
Great, thank you, Rob. Um, so as Rob mentioned, we would need a motion to approve these for first reading. I was just looking, the policy committee does meet again.
November twenty-fourth.
Fourth, so, you know, anyone that has any suggestions or concerns, that certainly would be excellent time to bring them up then. 'Cause then they'll come back to us for a second reading, um, or if they're changed. So if I could entertain a motion to, um, accept the first reading of the policies as noted?
So moved.
Thank you, Joanne, and do I have a second? Kevin, thank you. Okay, so the motion on the floor is to accept the first read in a policy. One thousand one hundred ten, one thousand one hundred twenty, eleven thirty, twelve ten, twelve twenty, and seven four oh one. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and any opposed? None, so the motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Can I, spelling correction?
I'm sorry?
Can I make a spelling correction?
Just throw it to Rob or Matt.
Okay.
Perfect. 'Cause it's just a first reading, so they can make that before the second. And so the next committee report up is the building committee, so I'll turn that over to Aaron.
Hi, guys. Um, I think we talked about plenty of the building work and the maintenance, et cetera. Um, just to follow up on a couple things. The finance and planning committee and like strategic planning is also gonna, you know, help steer this for the future. As far as like a sinking fund, as Hurley mentioned, um. You know, the extra expenses and so forth. I think, you know, a discussion was also when we replace it, you know, looking at a more. Um, like better way to clean, you know, different surfaces, right? So it's a little bit easier for, for everybody to get to the status. Um, other than that, thanks for the great work and, um, yeah, we covered most of it.
Okay, great. Thank you, Aaron. Um, so now we are on to, um, some old business. So, um, first up, we have equity committee update, and, uh, Rob Bliss and Pam Reed are, um. Heading that up, and just of note, I think there was some confusion. So this is a committee within the district. It is not a committee of the school board. So just, just to clarify that, there are, there are members of the board on it, but it is not a committee of the board. So I will turn it over, um, to Rob and Pam.
All right, thanks, Allison. Yes, this is a, a work group, um, that started, uh, with the school lens. Um, so in early September, Rob and I distributed an invitation to employees and students. Uh, to join a volunteer work group that was focused on equity. Uh, participation by board members was recommended by the board chair. We were excited to hear from about forty people, um, who were interested in working together. We have representation from students, uh, faculty and staff from all grade levels and central office. We had our first meeting on October twenty-first. Unfortunately, of course, due to the circumstances, uh, we had to meet virtually. And while it's certainly not the best format for this type of work, we, uh, did some small group and some large group work, uh, together. Um, at our gathering, everyone shared, um, why they were interested in this work and why we were collectively present. We worked to define equity in schools, um, sculpting a definition that would provide common language and a foundation for our work. We, uh, talked about other voices that we might want to engage as we move forward and how we can, um, engage them in the future. Um, but again, recognizing that right now, we're working with an RCPS lens. Lastly, we began talking about the need to research models for a district-wide equity audit. The purpose of an equity audit is to acknowledge strengths within our system and to identify areas of growth. We meet again on Thursday of this coming week, and Rob is gonna provide you a summary of our intentions for that time.
Thanks, Pam. So yeah, like Pam said, we're meeting on Thursday, the twelfth. Um, and our goal there is to review, uh, the work we had done in our definition, uh, earlier. And we're gonna try to consolidate that into a, a single definition that we can use as a foundation. We're gonna take people's input on what they learned from reviewing and researching equity audit resources. And try to figure out what the best model we can use, uh, to support our district is. Uh, and then we have a prompt that we're gonna consider. On that day, this is a big part of the work that we'll be doing. And the prompt is, it's fall two thousand twenty-five and we're opening a school. Uh, the district and community have been on the equity journey since two thousand twenty. What is the equitable experience that families and students have as they walk in the doors and take part in their educational process? And given that visioning, we'll start to build a project plan, working back five years to how we get to that point. Um, and so we'll be mapping out that progression as a beginning. That's, that in and of itself is a big project, uh, how to structure the work, how to pace it out, how to create our benchmarks. Um, and how to create our successes that we're gonna shoot for. Um, the other thing I'll say, and I, I think, not sure if Pam mentioned this or not. But one of the things we wanted to find out was, you know, what other voices, uh, we wanted to include. And one of the things Pam suggested was structuring our work in, in like subcommittee formats. And giving specific tasks and projects to groups of people so that they could attack them and report back to the big group. Pam's an expert at project management and organizing people. Um, so I would add to the end of that, um. These meetings are at times and places where not everybody can participate, but if you're interested in helping anybody here on the board or anybody in the public. Um, I'm sure that we're gonna have plenty of work to do in the coming weeks, months, and years. And it really is a community effort to develop a most equitable school system and community. Uh, so if anybody is interested in, in joining us, please reach out to me or Pam or anybody here at Longfellow, and they'll point you in the right direction. Anything else, Pam?
No, you're too kind with the compliments, though.
Nah, you're the best.
Right. Thanks, Rob and Pam. Any questions from any board members? Okay, C nine, uh, sorry, Dina?
I may have missed this, so I apologize. Who is part of the committee? Like, what makes up the, people that make up the committee?
There are forty, there are about forty people there. We have students, faculty, administration, um, school board members. Um, for now. Say it again?
They're educators.
They're educators. Um, trying to get people from anywhere in the district. All members were invited. It's a voluntary basis. So we've gotten a good number so far, and I'm sure we'll grow.
Are there parents also in part of it?
Not at the moment, but in part of our work is what other voices we need, and we have, uh, a substantial list of people whose voices we'd like to hear. So that'll be coming.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Um. What time, what time is the meeting on the twelfth?
I think it's three thirty again, isn't it?
Three thirty? I have to check. That's two days ahead, Kevin. You're, you're killing me.
Three thirty.
Three thirty, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, um, so next update we have is, um, on the flagpole procedures. So I will tend, send, turn it over to, um, Greg Schillinger.
Uh, good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to provide an update on the, um, flagpole procedures. Um, you will recall, uh, about a year ago, quite a few discussions about, uh, flags and flag raising. Um, after those discussions, the, uh, the policy committee of the school board. Uh, also worked with legal counsel, uh, to begin to work through some of the issues in regards to things like a limited open forum and First Amendment. Uh, those things that were addressed. Um, you also will recall, two months ago was the first reading of the board policy. Uh, which was then adopted, uh, in our last meeting. So from that policy, uh, is the development of this procedure. Uh, which kind of gets into the logistics of how, uh, how that process would work, uh, going forward. So, um, as you can see from the enclosure, the first parts of the, of the procedure reference that policy, the board's policy that was adopted. Uh, last month, um, and then also some guidelines. Um, I won't go through all of them, um, but the, uh, the basic idea. Is trying to balance the, uh, issues that are raised in regards to student voice, um, and trying to encourage students. Uh, to, to speak out, um, and also the school's educational mission. Um, uh, that is, uh, at the core of its mission. So, uh, the application asks for, uh, student organizations to talk a little bit about their request, what the flag is, what it represents. Um, and also to talk about how it supports that educational mission. Um, the, uh, this past August. Uh, Mr. Darvionik, uh, and his crew, uh, erected a flagpole, uh, in the square just outside the, um. Uh, just outside the library, um, and we kind of liked that idea. We actually had students come in back in, uh. Uh, the end of the school year to help us choose that location. Um, and they, what they talked about was really liking the idea of it being kind of at the center of the school. Uh, so you have the red and the white wing and the library, uh, on all three sides. Uh, so that is now up, the, the, uh, the, uh, Rollin flag is flying there now. Um, um, but we're ready to, uh, uh, accept applications to fly that flag. And actually, there have been some discussions with some student organizations already, uh, about doing so. So if there are any questions? So if there are any questions, I would be happy to answer those.
Okay, so any board members with any questions? Charlene?
My question is, if there, so is it my understanding that if there is no flag accepted for whatever purpose, then we would continue to fly the Ruttland flag in its place until we have time the the until we've accepted certain flags? Is that how that was working?
Yes, correct. I I just didn't like the idea of a completely empty flagpole, frankly. So the 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 Ruttland flag is 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 what's there now. And in the absence of of another one, that would be the one that I would keep.
Basically, it's the default flag that we will have up there unless until we have others.
Correct. It's it's the school flag.
No problem. Yeah, no, that's no problem. That's fine. Thank you.
Okay, any other board members have any questions? Okay, we don't see any. So thank you, Greg, for that update. And then we will keep Greg on tap here to provide us with an update on the school mascot process.
So again, thank you. I've included kind of a summary view of the process that's been laid out, part of which is actually already underway in light of the the timeline that's available. So to start the process, back on November second, I sent an email to the entire student body. It was basically just a yes/no question asking for, yes, I'm interested in participating in the process. I received responses, a total, actually, it says fifty-seven, actually fifty-eight students have expressed an interest in participating in that process now. This week, I sent out a brief application asking for feedback from students. That went out on the ninth, and it's due back on Tuesday, the seventeenth. And what that application asks for is things like name, grade level, and also for students to talk about some of some of their involvement in the school and the community, sort of the groups that they represent, their experience with things like a dialogue and working through working through issues via discussion and dialogue, and then also their ability to commit to the process. And what I laid out at the at that point was about an hour per week, and I'm hoping to be able to stick to that. As I said, that's due on the seventeenth. The the process that I'm working on right now, which is already kind of a variation on what I had originally planned, but the process that I'm working on now is trying to design a structure that would actually allow for as many of those fifty-eight students to actually participate in that process. It's a that's a really big group. So to try to facilitate and move that group along is going to take some work, but we're we're trying to identify a structure that would allow for that. So that that's the process, sort of where we are right now. So then turning our attention to the future, the first part of the process would be asking that student, as well as the student body, to identify a series of characteristics that are important attributes for for this work. In particular, having conversations and talking about what are the things that makes Ruttland Ruttland? What are the things that distinguish us? And some of those positive characteristics that we would want to make sure if this is a representation of our school and our community, what are some of the qualities that we want to make sure are highlighted? There would be an iterative process where those characteristics would be developed, a series of dialogues where we would come to a consensus on these are the three to five characteristics that we really think are important. It's it's going to take a lot of work. We we don't really have space for any assiduousness. But I think that the the process is is possible, hopefully during the winter months, to be able to complete that process. Following that would be, again, the development of a survey. This survey would go to students, faculty and be open to the community at large. We would start with, what's your idea for a new mascot? And what would you like that idea to be? But then there's the the sort of backfilling of, okay, we identified these three to five characteristics. So if this is your idea, now explain to us how your idea matches these characteristics, which we've identified as really being important to the identity of the school and the community. The this is then going to take a great deal of sort of synthesizing this this qualitative data. This is not the kind of work that lends itself to graphs and charts. This is narrative. So there's going to be a great deal of synthesizing of these suggestions and explanations into specific examples of a new name. The that then would go back out to the full student body, where the this or this group of this committee would identify, again, I'm going to say three, maybe four suggestions of a specific name. And then that would go out to the student body, asking for their feedback on which one they would choose. The goal then, as you will recall in the motion, is that in February, at the February board meeting, that we would be bringing the suggestion back to the board for a specific name. I would my intent would be to bring that one suggestion from the student body after this, this, as I said, iterative process, back to the board at the February board meeting. Following the February board meeting, would we would begin the process of developing the actual imagery of the to follow in terms of the name. So that the, you know, I've already had some requests from some students that are in the graphic arts program at Stafford to work on that. That would that would sort of be its own process in and of itself. So that is the summary, kind of what we've already engaged in and kind of where we are now, and then what we're planning on for coming up.
Great. Any questions?
I do, Allison.
Dina? And then Erin?
I just want to make a side comment that may loop into this a bit as and I think what maybe we can all agree on as a learning process out of it, that we can kind of make some suggestions for the future is how to bridge us more with the high school population. And I thought about, you know, the fact that we have the Hannah and Isabella right now as a student representatives, that they're going to love me for this, but that we get information from them about the school. And I thought maybe it will be a good idea for them to also report back to the student body about agenda items and things that have been discussed in very, you know, not detailed, but bullet type of form back to the student body so they are better informed about what's going on on the board level. And maybe even sending out board agendas to the student body of the high school level, you know. You know, kids in the younger ages may not have much interest in that. But to just encourage that involvement and and being proactive versus feeling maybe that we are kind of this removed body from them. So I just want to kind of put that out there, suggestions that may for future kind of communication can help, maybe.
Okay, thank you, Dina. Erin?
Hi, so for these last three items, I really would like to to say thank you for all the work you guys put in because I know sometime last spring, you know, we had talked about the equity plan and getting that together. So to see that finally is really great. And as far as the flag policy, you know, you talk about a list of signatures and some statements of support. I feel like those need to be quantified in some way, similar to a petition or letters of reference. But other than that, again, it's it's really great progress. So this is a little off topic, but not really. It goes along with everything that's been said here. I would like to bring a new motion to the board based on the the outcome of last last meeting of the motion and vote and how it was executed. It was inappropriately executed when the amendment was sit dated. The the entire board was not given an opportunity to second. So my motion tonight is to rescind the Raiders' motion from the last meeting based on three specific things. Questionable communications, some policy violations within the board, and some intellectual property. And I would like a cease and desist request on anybody continuing to pursue this issue. I think this community has been separated tremendously by this. And again, the motion is on the floor to rescind the last motion based on the Raiders and not using the name anymore. So I guess anybody can second if they were interested.
Actually, that's not a point of order.
It is, Allison. Allison, there's parliamentary order. If there's parliamentary order. Followed last meeting.
Point of order.
Okay.
Please let the chair speak.
Yes.
So she can cut us off like she has in the past? No.
Listen, I'm not going to play this game.
That's where I'm at.
The game either. So give it up.
Oh, Allison.
There's no motion on the floor yet.
There's no motion on the floor currently. There is not an action item on the agenda. There is not an action item on the agenda. And the motion can only be made to overturn it by someone that spoke in the positive. Those are Robert's Rules of Order.
Allison, read the manual. I'm being the chair. Figure it out. Then come back to us.
Brittany, I just did, and you didn't bother to listen.
No, Allison, you don't understand. Mute yourself because that's the respectful thing to do, right?
So there's no motion on the floor. If someone would like to put this on a future agenda.
To suspend the rules. Allison, shut up. I'm talking now, not you.
Hurley, actually, you're not because you do not have the floor. I am following Robert's Rules of Order. And you can say whatever you want, that I am not, but I am. This is how the board is run. This is how the board has been run, and this is Robert's Rules of Order. So I'm sorry that you do not like this.
You have not been recognized.
The way that it is going to be. So we need to move on with the meeting, and this motion could be made on a future agenda. And but currently, to retake up the motion, per Robert's Rules, it needs to be someone that was on the affirmative side. So are there any other questions?
If I may, Allison. Affirmative side or not, it was inappropriately, the action was inappropriately taken because the entire board did not have the ability to second. Friendly emotion is not how that is offered. You did not give the proper explanation of how to amend that policy or amend that motion. So that is my basis. We can certainly call point of order and come back with a better, you know, legal description argument, if you like, but that is really my biggest concern tonight.
And a friendly emotion can be made as long as the person who made the motion is willing to amend it. Otherwise, it is a different circumstance, and that is what happens.
But that is really not the actual definition and description of Robert's Rules of Order, a friendly emotion or not. There's like, there's trends in how that might be used, but in eleven years on this board, we have never, ever done that. There's always been an opportunity for that full board to second. And I will say, all three of these last documents should have come to us very, very early on in this discussion about the Raiders. So we would have time to evaluate, as well as administration. When I said policy was violated, this board is hired to or elected to hire the superintendent, whose job it is then to run the district and the employees, et cetera. We are the intermediary, judge and jury, if you will. But what happened here was the administration, in my humble opinion, was not given the opportunity to come forth with these or other documents based on, you know, other correspondence and how quickly this was elevated, et cetera. So there was a lot of mishaps. So I did need to make that clear. And however we want to continue, that's fine. I will bring it back again if necessary.
And and Erin, just so you're aware.
I'm not sure, Erin, what you mean by the whole board having an opportunity to second because a second is made by one person. So I don't know, maybe mean something else.
Yeah, Allison, there was a conflict of interest, according to the Secretary of State's office with Kevin. And that is, I should have a letter for our next meeting clarifying my conflict and questioning his. So he's the one who made the motion.
Yeah, we're not going to debate that he should.
You know what? We don't have to debate it because you should have.
Games without any information. Hurley, you are out of order.
And you are out of order with your letter, which I'm still waiting for an apology.
I don't know what letter you're speaking of, and our motion.
You know what? Then it's pretty, and it's pretty bad if you can't.
You know what, Hurley? You need to stop. As the clerk, this has to end. Wait till you're called upon. We don't argue like this, Hurley. You need to stop.
Allison, so are there any other questions for Principal Schillinger regarding the process as he reported out? Okay, thank you. So seeing none, the other old business to come before the board is, Dina pointed out that staff relations update did not make it on the agenda because they hadn't been scheduled at that time. But they did meet last night, so she wanted to give a quick update on that.
Yes, we had a a quick add-on meeting as things have been moving forward. We have, I'm reminding everybody, we are going into negotiations with four of the unions. We are moving forward in, I think, fairly well with our schedule. It's a little challenging, just kind of juggling the the difficulty with the schedule, a little bit with scheduling as we have to negotiate with the four separate unions. We've been fortunate to have a multi-year contract that just happened to come to an end, and we have to start this year. Luckily for us, it's also COVID year, so it brings in a little bit of the what everybody has been discussing from other committees. We had a very informal and pleasant meet and greet with our counterparts from some of the unions. And we will discuss all the details, the contractual details, as we move forward. But that will be done, obviously, in executive session. So just wanted to let everybody know, we're going to go into a high-intensity schedule now, probably a meeting weekly or even multiple times a week as we can to move things on. So thank you.
Great. Thank you, Dina. So any other new or old business to come before the board? Okay, seeing none. The next thing on the agenda is anticipated executive session. So I will have the clerk make a motion.
Muted, I'm sorry. I make a motion that we go into an executive session to discuss negotiations, the pre-retired disclosure of which would put the board at a disadvantage. And we are inviting Superintendent Olson and Assistant Superintendent Robert Bliss, and also Finance Director Ted Plamenis
and also Finance Director Ted Plamenis to the executive session. And you're, you'll receive an email forthwith.
Okay, and do I have a second?
Excuse me? I think Erin had a question before we had that motion.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to enter executive session. So if I can get a second on that.
Second.
Okay, thank you. So Erin?
We can certainly just go into executive session at this point. It's been a long night.
And the executive session, again, is as stated for contractual matters only. So all those in favor?
Aye.
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 And any opposed? Okay, so the motion passes unanimously, and Joanne has sent a link to the board members and admin. Thank you, everyone.